Wow. It's like somebody else just joined.
Hi, who's on?
Hi, this is Tim Ryan, the town council.
Okay. Still have a few minutes, I guess, before we start.
Yeah, I wanted to apologize for not making your last meeting. I got confused schedules and understand Bill Soms showed up and he gave me a call afterwards.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was, Bill, Bill showed up, but somehow I guess he hadn't gotten the word that he'd been replaced by you. So, uh, he, we broke the news to him.
Yeah, no, he, he, we both knew what the assignments were and we just got crossed up in our schedule.
Yeah, yeah. No, uh, no problem. No problem. Well, at any rate, welcome.
Thank you.
We're glad to, glad to have you and have a connection to the, to, to the council. Bill, Bill's been very, very good in that, in that regard and.
Yep, he, he, he gave me a little history on, no pun intended, a little history on the historic commission.
Okay, okay. Now, I think, I think it's, it's an important position to be that big liaison. So we do have, you know, direct connection with, with the council.
Right. I will, I will say that there might be times where I won't be able to make every meeting, but I'm always available via email or phone call. Happy to take any issues you need addressed to council, to the full council, or even any commission you take it to. I, but I just want to be of the best service as I possibly can for you guys.
Okay, well, thank, thank, thank you.
All right. I'll go on mute here until your meeting starts.
So Rebecca, you're on, right?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good.
Hey Ben, it's Doug. I've joined by phone only.
Somebody just joined?
Yes, it's Doug.
Doug, hey Doug, how you doing?
Hey Ben, okay, thanks.
All right, so I'm gonna mark you as present. Thank, thank goodness Missy was able to get the information out, out to people. Somehow Christina usually does that and something, something didn't, didn't go quite right, I guess. Rebecca?
Yep.
Did you and Cory bounce up and down the cellar stairs a few times just to see if it holds together?
Well, what you fixed is holding together, but those, those actual boards that are really thin and cracked, they bounce quite a bit still.
A little bouncy. Yeah, they're, they're, but I, I think they're, you know, I'm not worried about the tread, the tread, talk about the treads themselves. The treads, yeah. I mean, they're, they're old, but they're, they're still, they're oak, so they're, they're pretty, pretty rugged, you know, I'm not concerned. I was most concerned about them coming out of the grooves, you know, inside things and then the step just collapses. And I was able to pull those side beams together a bit, so there's more in touch. And then I drove some screws into some of the ends of them so that they wouldn't be able to pull out, you know, that easily. And I fixed the bottom step because it was supported half on a, the beam and half on a cement block.
That was the one that collapsed with me on it?
That, that, oh boy.
That's the one that fell with me on it.
That made me nervous too because, you know, if it, it could move and if it slipped, you know, it could be nasty. So I think it's, I think it's, it's good for, for, for a good long time. Let's see, is anyone else just joined?
Hey Ben, it's Missy.
Hi, Missy. Thanks, thanks for getting this, getting this back on track. Hey Lance?
Hi there. Hey Ben, Bill Barnes is here as well.
There you go.
Okay, and here's Bill. Hi Bill.
Hello.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five. The only one, Kent, Ken is excused. The only one is not on yet, I think is Jay. Are you there, Jay?
I don't see him.
No.
So it looks like we have two guests, TK Ryan and Lowveig Pearson.
Hello, I'm Daniel Crew and my fiance is Solveig Pearson. I'll try to figure out how to, uh, there we go. We just purchased 68 Vinegar Hill in Gales Ferry and we'd like to sit in on this meeting if that's all right.
Absolutely.
Sure, thank you.
Welcome.
And TK Ryan is Timothy Ryan, your town council liaison.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, JP is on. Ben, does that mean we've lost Phil Soms? He, we have a change, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you haven't lost Bill. He's still on council.
Well, I know.
But we, we switched up the liaison appointments and just mentioning before that we got a little crossed up with our schedules last HDC meeting.
Oh, okay, well, that's okay, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jay, Jay is not here yet?
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh, here, okay, good. Good, I think we can call, call the meeting to order then. We've, we've got on the Zoom here, myself, Bill, Missy, Doug, Jay and Lance. So we've got five, five regular members, so I guess we don't, don't need, I don't need to assign Lance as a voting member tonight. Okay, Lance?
That's all right. I can deal with it.
All right. The, um, does anybody have any corrections, changes to the minutes? Hearing, hearing, if we can have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
I'll motion to accept the minutes.
To accept? Do we have a second?
I'll second that, JP.
Okay, that's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, opposed. Okay, no one's opposed, so it passes unanimously. Uh, let's see, fiscal, fiscal report, just me. Uh, the Lester House is getting, getting down. We've got $2,052 left for the rest of the year. So it's, it's, I think it's gonna, gonna be tight. We've got some things that need to be done. Hopefully we can find a way to fund them. Sawmill has $61.50 left for the rest of the year. And the biggest chunk of that is, is, I think, was money that was put in for a security system.
That's correct.
Go with that, right?
Yeah, Ben, and I'm hopeful we'll, we'll find out something from the, the upcoming assessment that'll give us some ideas. Is it, do we really wanna, you know, a fire alarm? Do we want a sprinkler system? Do we want to reallocate that funding for something else that might be a better use of, you know, protecting the property?
Okay. Let's see, and then for the, well, it's a miscellaneous account, but it covers the school and research committee with the signs. And there's still $700 left, left in that. I guess we still, we have a, the $200 purchase order that would be put out for some, something this, this year. And in the capital account, it's carried over. There's 7,000 in the Lester House and the best I can figure 25,000 in, in the sawmill account. Now, what, the, the, the problem keeping, keeping track of the, who, which money goes where has been almost impossible. So what, what I have asked the finance people is to give us two accounts for capital. And it went, went through Marsh. I think I, did I send, send that out? So I think we will very soon have, you know, an, an account, capital account for the Lester House and then a separate account for the sawmill. And the money that's in there now, the, the one account, 32,000, I've broken it up as best I can recall and what we've spent and what have you to, to 7,000 and 25,000. I mean, does that, does that sound about right to you guys? From what, what you know about the previous capital that we submitted? Well, that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be it. I think it's, I think it's close. Okay, any questions? All right. Okay, moving along, Bill, the sawmill committee?
Yeah, sure. And now, just so I know, is, is Missy, are you taking the minutes tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so a few things I'd want to share with you. Over, since last meeting, Alan, Ben and I had a meeting to review the grant we received from the state for the structural survey and condition assessment. The prior draft I had written erroneously in my point, or I had described that we would actually be doing the work repairs as opposed to just assessment. And, and thanks to Ben and Alan, we confirmed that the grant does not include any monies for repairs, but simply for the, the assessment. So Ben, in your mailbox, your, your email account, I've sent an update this evening. So I think I've captured nearly all the points. Some of them became moot based on some of the restructuring we did. So I wasn't able to accept each, each one of the edits that you had provided, but I think I've captured all of them. If you could take a look, I think we'll be very close. In it, I've laid out the timeline, so it's no longer a fictitious timeline and, and I, I think it'll work, but I, you know, I'd, I'd welcome your thoughts if we're being, you know, too aggressive on the timeline. My hope is we'll be able to, you know, with your consent, concurrence and that of Alan, we'll be in a position to get it to Mary for review in short order.
Okay.
I also, yeah, the other thing I would say, Missy, is thanks to Ben, we have identified the three bidding companies that'll participate. So one we had been able to reach took Ben a little, a dedicated email, phone call. And we have approval from the state of Connecticut to use those three. So we have the three selected vendors, each of which has experience with mill properties. I'm gonna say water mills, but at least mills. So we feel comfortable, we have three who are interested, willing to come to visit it before the proposals are due. And then I think we can be working in earnest by the first of October, or excuse me, first of June for that, for the, the effort. And as an assessment, I think two months, which is the timeline that gives us, you know, well before the state due date to complete that. So I'm hopeful we'll be in good shape. So Missy, the RFP, we're nearly complete. We have three approved vendors and we hope to have it released by the middle of March. I, I don't believe I have any other meaningful updates related to the sawmill for this time, other than maybe some back and forth on budget, but I think we're, that at this point is, is pretty much set.
Okay, thank you. I think after Missy or Doug gives the saw, the Lester House report, I want to just go, go back on the current budget to talk, to talk a little, a little bit about, about, about that and the possibility of transferring uh, some funds if, if that is, you know, the smart, smart, smart thing to do at this, this point. Okay, Missy or Doug?
Um, I don't even know where to start. Um, one second. Just need to pull up my notes, bear with me. Um, so the subcommittee met on the 17th. That's not true, we've met sooner than that, more recent than that. One second. And technical issues this evening, apparently.
Missy, it was the 16th.
Thank you. I can't seem to find my documents, so. Um, we're still working on plans for the Fourth of July event. We're getting a little closer to actually having some really good ideas and hopefully some good participation from outside folks to come in and do demonstrations and that sort of thing. Six years later, I found it. Um, and that includes food trucks and some artisans. We're looking to see if maybe we can get someone to come out to do some timber framing demonstrations. Um, we have someone who is interested in doing a Windsor chair demonstration on how to build one. Um, and then we think that some of the folks from the sawmills may be able to come over and do some demonstration with the equipment we have in the barn. Let's see. Aside from that, we've got some exciting events coming up this summer with the library doing reading under the tree. And Rebecca, I know that's not exactly what we're calling it, but that's, that's what came to my mind first off. And I think that's gonna be a couple Saturdays during the summer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. Um, there's an event on August 13th. Go ahead. Was somebody gonna say something?
Okay, that's it, okay. I, I, yeah, I think I put it, put it in an email, but when I was over at the house, I took my little electronic pH meter and checked the water. And, yeah, it's, it's quite acidic at this point. And it's, that's, that's not good for, you know, for any length of time because this darn acid eats the copper pipes. And that, that, that would be bad. To any rate, it needs to be serviced. And here's one of the, the things, I don't think it was budgeted. Uh, it may need to be, what do they call it? Re, re, re?
Recharged event.
Recharge. Well, it's not just putting material in. After a while, it builds up solids in the bottom. And after, and then they have to clean that out manually with a hose and, and instead of a $200 fee just to recharge it, you end up with a five or $600 fee, I think, something in that ballpark. And we are kind of running short on, on budget, you know? We've had, we've had some things that needed to be taken care of and some things planned. But what I, Bill is there, if the, the sawmill can see, see their way to do what needs to be done, but there might be some extra, you know, some money that's, you can always find ways to spend it, but things that could be put off if there was some, some. If there was some some left. What I would like the commission permission, if if we need the funds to do some. Some stuff with the at the Lester house, permission to do a transfer. We can transfer money from one account to to another as time goes, you know. As situations arise and and develop. The mission kind of has to be on board with that. And right now, I don't, I don't know what the amount would be. But I would just like. Both both committees to. Come up with kind of a, you know, a a spend plan. For the funds they have for the rest of the year to see see where you stand. And if one is over and one can spare, I'd like to, you know, have permission to transfer. Some funds from from uh, one account and and into another. So. That's.
And the the only thing that we will not.
Financial situation, I, you know, as I see, looking at the whole picture.
Vin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, um, the one thing I would say is the only item in the budget that is a potential. Favorability would be on the. Security system. As you recall, we didn't execute that last year for two reasons. One, the cost of installation was. Considerably higher than normal because of COVID. And we also at that time wondered whether, do we really want a fire alarm? Because by the time the fire trucks show up, the thing's gonna be burnt. And then the question would be why, what good would that have been? And so, you know, we might seek to use that money to fund a sprinkler system. Um, but before we do that, I hopefully the the assessment this year will will. You know, the structural assessment we're proceeding with will give us some insight onto, you know, what is in the art of the possible. And to do in a way that it doesn't look like someone put a sprinkler system in a historic building. Right? How do we do it architecturally, you know? And that there'll be enough water so that if it ever did go off, there'd actually be water to pump. So there's a few things we need to think through on that. Um, so it is quite possible that we will not use the full security system. Um, funding for this year and and to the extent that that would help. Um, the Nathan Lester house, I'd have no issue foregoing that. Uh, we won't know until, you know, the results of this, the assessment. Uh, which won't be until the July, August timeframe. Um, and I would, while I could rush to spend the money now, I don't think it's, I'm not sure it's in. I don't know, can you still hear me? I just got up. Okay, um, so I don't know if that's in the in our best interest to simply spend money just to put a system in. So if it could go to use to the the, um, you know, to the Nathan Lester house, I I'd love to see that happen. Um, if we do anything, it will be a small portion of that at the end. Um, installation, I don't recall where they read installation in the expense or the capital budget, do you?
Yeah, I I I think, well, I. I got some information that I sent you from Sean. The buildings and grounds supervisor, as they had just put in a security system for the, um. The food, the food locker, the building that's, you know, now now the food locker. And they're putting in a similar system in one of their, uh, one of their buildings. And it's it's wireless, but the cost. This is just for the security system, you know, I don't think it's includes fire alarms or. Or uh, sprinklers. Actually, he had, he had said, you think, you know. Uh, from what they've already paid for systems, it might run in the fifteen hundred to two thousand.
Yeah, when when we had it last year, remember, we selected, we looked at a vendor who had done. Um, the Mystic Seaport and other historic properties. And it's a vendor that had a system in the Up Down Sawmill years ago. Um, their installation charges were about four thousand dollars for the main building, another two thousand. If we wanted to for the blacksmith, roughly that. Um, and and we held off for a couple of reasons. One is it was particularly high cost of the cable. The cable itself was gonna be high. Um, and, you know, similar to the price of plywood at Home Depot, I'm certain it. It's come down at least a little. I don't know that it's returned to pre-COVID norm. Um, but I'm certain it's less than it was at that point. I think our decision will be, do we want a sprinkler system? A fire alarm system, you know, a smoke detector, do we want both? And we'll have to make some decision on what the what the merits of of the two would be.
Yeah, they did, um. Uh, I think the difference in cost is probably, this this one that they've used for the the town buildings is wireless. You know, it's it's a wireless system.
So yeah, and if you, if you remember, the 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 challenge becomes in having it available in a a building, and Alan will recall this. You know, if it's in a home, you can do certain things, but if it's in the equivalent of a barn. Where mice, you know, and rodents would be eating at the cable. So our installation included proposal was. You know, steel jacketed cable. Also, the detection method method used. Um, was was somewhat problematic. Um, you can't use the normal motion detector or, you know, bats and and rodents. Um, might set it off. And so there were, there was a special sort of thing that had to be, you know, slightly different than what you might put in a home or in a normal building.
Mm-hmm. Could you, um, you think it's worth talking to, uh, integrated systems?
Actually, I don't right now. I think what we should do is wait for, given where we're headed. For the assessment to complete in terms of recommendations on what they may envision for a mill property.
Okay, but you, I mean, I'm I'm sure you realize we can't carry the funds over.
I realize that. And I I I understand, Vince. I don't don't think it makes sense because if we did it, I don't know that we would use them. We would more likely use the Rue. Protective services that we had spoken with last year.
Yeah, it seems, it seems that. That we we.
And and the reason for that isn't a one of just general preference or because they were there first. It was because of their experience with historic properties.
Yeah, this is Rue, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, they've they've got, they've got a lot of experience with the town. But it sounds like integrated systems has got quite a bit of experience too.
None, none that I knew of from historic properties when we did the the look last year.
Yeah. Well, I think it might be be worth, because I think, I think. Even if we 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 get a, we need eventually sprinkler system or fire alarm, we're still gonna need a security system. Right? I mean, for.
Yeah, so Rue was a security system.
Yeah, but but what I'm saying is we could. If we did just a security system, we're not gonna waste our money. Or it's, you know, could could it be done uh, now? And then the other put put off. Um, until, you know, we get our survey done and what have you. Because, I mean, I think we do need a security system. We've had, well, she, you know, we've got, we've had a number of break-ins. Oh, over the years. And some tools were stolen from. One of one of the buildings.
So then let me, let me pose it this way. I can spend every penny, which is what I typically do, that's been allocated. Or I can defer and make those funds available to Nathan Lester house. I ask you, sir, the choice is yours. If you want me to spend it, I'll spend every nickel.
Yeah, now I'm hoping that there's, there's a piece.
No, that here's, here it is, Ben. There is either. An installation of the security system and no available budget. Or there's a deferral of that project. And the reallocation of that funding in this fiscal year to support Nathan Lester. If you want me to move, I will have a security system installed, but there will be zero dollars left. To be provided to the late Nathan Lester house.
Hey, uh, before, before you decide on that, could you talk to? The you or how, you know, your guys talk, talk with the integrated. Uh, systems people to see what they, what they would offer. What it would cost if there are concerns.
Is there, is there a requirement to?
Did you, uh?
To, we've already done the vendor selection. And went through some rigor to do so. And if you recall from last year. You know, that was done through a solicitation of historic properties, the identification of Rue. I'm happy to talk to him, but I'm wondering for what the purpose is. If it's to find a vendor who does properties that aren't historic.
Yeah.
That aren't facilities like this, then if they have experience in that, it's one thing, but I, when I did the. The vendor review last year, they didn't have experience in historic properties, which is why we didn't, you know, discuss it further with them.
Okay, but that wasn't the integrated systems, right?
Well, I looked, I looked at all the ones in the in the local region to include ADT and and some others. That were available. And we ultimately reached agreement, we would have a discussion with Rue. We didn't think the cost required competitive bid. And we were concerned with the historic relevance. And I think that holds true. So if it does, my question is, what is the purpose of having the discussion with them?
I think, one, there may be some advantages. From a uh. Maintaining the uh, look of the building without running wires and. You know, metal, metal stuff. And because with a wireless, you know, you don't have any wires. You know, so so uh. Wire wireless. And I think.
But the sensors still have to be there, Vin, and then they're not industrial. That's the concern. You're gonna end up with, you know, plastic, the sorts of things you see in a, in an office building. I under, I appreciate wireless, right? I understand that the advantage of it, but I'm not certain. That they have a a demonstrated application historic property, which was the primary consideration last year. You know, if that's it, I can go to Home Depot and I can buy wireless, I'll put it in myself. Right? But I don't know that that's what we want to do.
No, no, I I'm. Uh, I I can say is that Sean, you know. Had high recommendations for these people.
Sean who?
There are, there are differences. But I I I don't know, I'm. I don't, I just think of her to.
Then, then who, do you refer to Sean? I'm not familiar with Sean who?
He's he's such, he's a supervisor of buildings and grounds.
Okay, do we have it in any of, do we have that in any of the other historic district commission properties?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Has, have they provided any systems in any of our historic district commission properties? Corey, you're shaking your head, maybe yes, is that true? Or no?
No, I, I. I talked to a number of companies and they they were one about the Lester house. And uh.
We didn't, and we we didn't use them for the Lester house.
That had had higher priorities and I wasn't. Nearly as concerned because we have tenants living there. Whereas the sawmill is vacant ninety five percent of the time. And I think the need for a security system is much greater at the at the sawmill.
Yeah, that that, for that, I don't disagree. And I apologize for those on the call, because I think we're we're using a lot of airtime. Then my concern, though, is the nature of what you described as the advantage of the wireless is exactly what. You know, I think it was Paul Rue, if I'm I'm maybe have the first name wrong. You know, he advised, you know, emphatically that it needed to be a wired. And, you know, steel jacketed wired cable. To be anything he'd be willing to wanna support, particularly because of the open nature of that building. But what I will do, as at your request, if you get me the contact information, I will talk to him. But I want you to know that, you know, the importance to me is that it be something that will endure, right? That a system that we have to replace components because they've been eaten by, you know, our rodent visitors. Isn't gonna be a very good thing. The other thing Rue spent a lot of time on is selecting a particular sensor. That the sensor you would put in your home or your garage. Would be, would generate a a significant number of false alarms in an environment like the the sawmill property.
Yeah, well. If you, if if you wouldn't wouldn't mind, just just contacting him and. Ask, ask those kind of questions, you know, for all I know, they've. They've put these in, you know, historic structures or what, they they've, you know, they've been around for a while. Um, I think they also did the library. The Bell Library, I think. So. That that goes back quite a, quite a few years.
Yeah, I would just say that in my mind, like, the library may be historic in age, but I don't consider it historic property. Right? I mean, we're we're dealing with, I don't know. I just, we have some dated properties, I would want to make sure that, you know, it could be running there. So that'll be my first inquiry is like, what is their experience in historic properties? And if there isn't any, I'm not sure that I'm interested in talking any further, but presuming they are. Yeah, um, the next line of questioning would be, you know, how effective do they expect that sort of alarm to be in? In a property like the sawmill? So if you get me the information, I'll be, I'll happily contact them and inquire.
Yeah, that's that, that's all. I just, that would be, I think, worth worthwhile. Okay, um, let's see. Uh, research, Hans?
Uh, yeah, I I I've had some discussions with Missy and Doug. Uh, and we're still talking a lot about the um, the historic signage project. And, you know, some some new information since the last time I talked to the committee is that. I talked to Roland Foster, the sign painter, he's the, you know, the guy that does the historic sign plaques for. Uh, Mystic and New London, a number of other towns near here. And he said, he confirmed that his his price per sign would be about ninety five dollars per house sign. For an ordinary sign that, you know, didn't have a lot of extra lettering on it, which seems very fair. And my 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 gut instinct is to uh, not do what. Well, certainly not what Stonington's doing. Stonington charges people. Five hundred dollars for a ninety five dollar sign. And they include in that, you know, help with the research about the house and its date. Um, New London does two hundred and fifty for a ninety five dollar sign. I I I sort of feel that I want to get the maximum number of signs out there. So I'd love to sell them to people for, you know, at cost or maybe a little bit above if you wanted to. Add some administrative charges and, you know, I I I'm retired, I'd be willing to volunteer what expertise I have. To help people in the dating of their houses if they, if they want that help. And um, and I guess as we discussed at the last meeting, you know, the books by Jen Bell and by Rusty. Have already done a lot of that work for, you know, certainly the eighteenth and early nineteenth century houses in town. So anyway, we're we're thinking about this. The other, the other piece of information that's new is that. Uh, Roland Foster isn't so interested in doing larger signs. In other words. Like the one that uh, that we had made a couple of years ago for the Gales Ferry landing, which is, you know, a long block of text. You know, he just doesn't really have the time for that. He's 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 willing to do house signs and he, and he kind of loves it and takes pride in the fact that they're beautiful. But, you know, a strictly informational sign, he he advised us, we might. You know, better have it done by someone like, you know, Tony Sebelia or a, you know, a sign company that can do. Computer generated vinyl letters, you know, instead of a hand painted sign. So that's, that's, that's kind of interesting. So I I I think maybe the next job for Missy and Doug and myself is to. You know, I'd love to start generating some copy, you know, things that, you know, an article announcing that these. Um, historic signs can be had, you know, trying to get people to sign up for them. And, you know, try, again, Missy's good with this, you know, getting a web presence, whether it's on the. You know, the town website or other places or, you know, local newspapers, even the, uh, you know, the local hard copy papers like the. You know, the Thames River Times, that that kind of thing. Trying to get articles placed to get the word out. Because I I'd love to get more signs on houses as, you know, as as soon as we can. So that's that's all I have for.
The houses that haven't been researched. Um, the owners. A lot of them, I, I think, I mean, if I, if I were one of them and didn't know what my wife had been through. Uh, you know, doing that, that, what's involved in it would be like, boy, I don't know if I could. But with somebody like, like yourself to, to kind of guide them. And help them, I think.
I think people find it fun to go to, you know, go to the town hall.
To, to, to do it, you know, and for them to put some time into, uh. To get a nice plaque. So that, that, that's great. Appreciate, appreciate that.
I'll just comment on that if, if I will, um, if you don't mind. With sixty-eight Vinegar Hill here, we, when we purchased the home, we received about a three inch binder of, of newspaper cuttings and different things that. Can sometime be, sometimes be difficult to disseminate, so that, that would be very beneficial, I feel. And, uh, and we'd be very interested in that as well.
Yeah. Do they have, um, in that binder? Did they have, uh, you know, copies of, of deeds?
Some, yeah. I haven't, I haven't looked back to see what the earliest one is, but there are some.
Those are, those are really the, the key, I think, uh, from what. I'd, I, I've assisted. My wife, she's, she's done this sort of, sort of thing and has. Uh, from the society books that have these houses in, in them. But, uh. That's, that, that's sort of a key, key element of it. And what, what I did is. When she was trying to piece. Different properties together to see if they. They're what she thought they were, they would have. The boundaries. Of the property. Roughly mentioned, you know? So many rods this way and so many that way. And my job was to plot. As best I could. That piece of property. And the one next to it and see if they fit, fit together. To make, to make the story. But, uh, it's, 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 it's challenging, but I think it's, it's, it's very interesting.
It's, it's probably more complicated even than a lot of people think that you can. Go to deeds and find that there was a house on a certain plot of land in seventeen fifty. But you may look at the house and, you know, someone who knows about foundations and framing. Might say that, you know, that, that house was certainly updated in the early nineteenth century. And so you end up with a date that might be a combination of two dates. But, but yeah, no, I'm willing to delve into that. It's a little difficult, but, uh. You know, we, we got to know Abbott Lowell Cummings a while ago and. He said he, he would so often go to a house and. Have the hard job of telling the owner that it's a hundred years more recent. Than they thought it was, you know, they had a, a sign hanging there that says seventeen fifteen and that may not be true. But, but it's an interesting game and, you know, I, I'm, I'm willing to delve in and as I said, you know, as much as I. Share as much as I contribute.
In the process, you always find out some very interesting things about, about. You know, going back, actually the years now. All right, that, that, that's great. Thanks, thanks.
Before we leave that, if you want to put your, for your email address in the chat, Daniel, I'll be happy to keep you updated. From the sign perspective.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, um. Center School. Uh, Ken. It's not here, so there's no, no report. So, is there any? Uh, old business? To come before the commission? Okay, hearing none, is there any new business? Okay, here, hearing none. I asked for a, a motion to adjourn.
Uh, excuse me, Vin, this is Jay, uh, point of order. Can you hear me, Vin?
Yes, I can hear you.
Uh, a point of order, we should include in the minute meetings. Our guests who, who, people who are on commission, like we should include. Uh, Rebecca, Corey.
Jay, I've covered it. I've got them listed as a.
All right, thank you. This wasn't just end to end. I know Rebecca was at the last meeting, but her name wasn't on the minutes, so. Okay, Rebecca has.
True, well, plus, plus, plus our liaison. At this being.
I have them listed as well.
Okay.
Missy, do you want to finish the Lester report? Did you have any more?
Okay.
Cause I have a report from the Historical Society meeting that I went to that involves. Commission stuff.
Okay. Let's hear it.
So I was invited to the society meeting.
Society, but it really, okay. Uh, let's. Under, under new, new business, then let's. Why don't you give us a brief rundown of that, Rebecca?
So after, during the meeting, we had a great meeting and, um. They did decide to bring their annual meeting back to the Lester House. So they will not be having their meeting, annual meeting somewhere else. They will be bringing it here so that more people will come. During a tour day, so it would be June fourth. Um, they're looking into different events to have. During tour season. We have a calendar going. For them and then Andrea. And Jill Foster actually came to visit last Thursday to check on the collection. Where there is some confusion. Over whether I'm supposed to be taking care of that collection. Taking everything out of drawers, dusting things off, cleaning their. Collection, which I looked through my contract, which is through the commission. And I did not see anything. That has to do with the collection besides showing the museum, all that. Um.
You're talking about stuff that's up in boxes and. Things of that nature.
And draws and boxes, I guess. So my question for the commission would be. During the preparation of my contract. Was there, and there was there something I was supposed to do a scheduled maintenance of their collection? Because Andrea seems to think there was.
Well. I was on the impression, at least from the way Bill Fossum was talking. When they were negotiating with the town that. The care of the collection is the responsibility of. The society, you know, doing clean and dusting of the furnishings and things like that. That are on display, that's one thing, but the actual care of the collection. Is responsible with society because they own the. Artifacts. It's their, their artifacts.
That is, that is my recollection too.
Yes, my other question would be because like Jay just said. I was hired under Bill Fossum. So expectations were clear then, and then we moved with Vin and now we're moving on to Missy and Doug. So I think we have to revisit. To make sure the contract is correct and also revisit. Probably under old business, the fact that I still wanna lease.
Well, I don't, I don't think the, um. Your, your, your tasks have changed. Since, since, since we, we, you know, prepared them.
They have quite a bit actually because we have social media now. Which we did not have when I got hired. Um, which adds to the hours of responding and all the email and everything. Because prior to me being. The caretaker, the society had the ledger history dot org. And most of the questions for the Lester House went to them. And not the caretaker, unless the caretaker was the curator, but that's confusing. Um. So I feel that we might need to look at it. Under the Lester House Committee probably, but.
Let me type in a, a little bit, um, you know, as, as a conservator who's worked in museums on historic collections, I mean, there should be. Very little maintenance that you would need to do actually to the collection. In other words. If things are in storage, you know, they should be safe as they are, they, they wouldn't need to have anything done to them. What, what, what kinds of thing, what kinds of things are you thinking of as, uh, needing to be done?
We've had quite the mouse problem.
Ah.
Um. So dresses that have been packed, packed, packed away and such. Wool that's been laying out, obviously the mice have gotten into them. And a few of the quilts have been damaged as well. Um, which I can't do anything about.
No, 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 you should, you shouldn't really. I mean, you should, unless it's, you know, a matter of seeing that boxes that protect them from. You know, from vermin or, or mouse proof. I, I, I don't really know how, how they're stored.
Yes.
The, the historical society isn't asking you to, you know, re, re, put them in different boxes, are they, or?
No, but they talked about me setting up exhibits and stuff because they don't have a curator. And I don't feel comfortable taking dresses out and putting them on forms by myself or something could rip.
That's, that's not. No. I mean, you can, you know, make, give, give them a space and. Work with them, but it's gonna be up to them if they wanna set up an exhibit.
That was my understanding. I just wanted to know, like, could we clarify with the contract with them?
Absolutely.
No, that's, that's my feeling too. They shouldn't be asking you, Rebecca, to do that, to do that kind of work.
No, and then my other thing I wanted to say is one of the doors in the quarters is warped, I'll, I'll. Address with the, the Lester House Committee, but we do know our alarm system works now. And all the police come.
Oh, okay.
Door is warped and it popped open. And set off the alarm in the middle of the night. So. Old houses don't like those wireless systems, so. That's it for me.
Rebecca, and the, the doors is in question, are, are you talking about the doors upstairs or?
No, it's actually the carriage house door that over the years Vin and I have done a lot of work on that door. Um. With the lock popping off and stuff like that and, um. Just with that, we had that really hot day last week and then it got really cold the next day. And the wind and it just blew open in the middle of the night and. We didn't lose any heat, the alarm went off and everyone woke up in the neighborhood.
All right, I've added that, I've added that to the meeting. Minutes.
So you get a, uh, trying to get a carpenter over there. We interviewed, we've interviewed a couple. One declined, he's too busy. The other I haven't heard back from, so, uh, I've contacted, I think I've sent you an email, I've contacted a third guy. Who we've used before, Craig Nelson. Works with Holdridge. And he's, he actually indicated he might have some time to, to. Come look at some of, some of our problems. And this is, this would be one of them, to see, see if. He can, you know. Prepare the door to the point where it doesn't blow open, if that's the problem. So. So we, we are, we are, uh, working on things, but, uh. It's not, not that easy to, 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 to get. Carpenters to come for small projects like that. They're busy. Building houses and. Renovating, adding, putting additions on and so forth. And to have them come for a, you know, a, a day's work or whatever it might be. Is, uh, is, is kind of difficult. But we're, 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 are working on it. Okay. Back to we, do we have, we had a motion and a second to adjourn? I think. Is that right?
No, we didn't. There was a point of order made and, uh, I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
Okay. Ben, and I will second that motion from Jay.
Okay. So we can, um. Adjourn at this point? When you have a, a vote?
Aye.
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 Not. Not gonna violate Robert's rules, am I, if we thought on it now?
We all, we all agree. We all said aye.
Okay, well, great, we're, we're adjourned.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you. Ben, if you could send the security contact to me, I appreciate it.
Yes, I, I will. I actually. Did you get the tech, the text that I sent you? I sent you a text with, uh, his name and.
Oh, it's already in there? Okay, I did, I did get it just one second.
If you have that text. If not, I'll.
Oh, I do, Ronnie, yep, I've got it. I do have it, so I'm all set. Yep, thank you, Vin. I do, thank you very much.
Okay, go. All right, folks.
Night, all.
Thank you. Have a, have a good, have a good night. Okay.
Oh, good night.